Oh, fun. Great, great, great. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
So much.
Beautiful. All right. Spread the word. Great to be here with you. Great to be here with you. Everybody get a vote! I'm with you. All right. We're gonna talk for a few minutes and then take a couple of questions from you all. Could you have ever imagined that two girls from Mississippi with the kind of upbringing that we've had would be sitting on this stage?
Not at all. I'm still not quite certain I believe I'm sitting here. I'm having a little bit of an out-of-body experience, but it's fun. It's awesome.
I love it. I love it. I love the fact that you had to pull over to the side of the road. I do love that. You know, I am intrigued by your story, as have so many other people been intrigued by your story, but more than intrigued by this idea that you would actually dare to take this on. I have found in my own experience that when something major is happening, there's something inside you that feels like it's a calling. It's more than just, "Oh, I just wanna have a career. I just wanna do that." And I wanna know how that manifested inside you, that you knew that for such a time as this, you were called to this moment?
I was raised by Robert and Carolyn Abrams. They are originally from Hattiesburg, Mississippi.
And they're right here today.
They're sitting right here. They used to make us go and volunteer, which made me a little irritated because I'm like, "We're poor, too. Why are we volunteering?" And my mother's way of saying it was, "No matter how little we had, there were more people with less. Your job is to serve that person."
Yeah.
My dad was more succinct. He was like, "Having nothing is not an excuse for doing nothing." But it instilled in me two things. One, I believe poverty is immoral. I think it robs us of our humanity. I think it robs us of opportunity. And I think it's solvable. But the second piece is that I realized when I was in the legislature that the person who sits in the governor's office decides access to education, to health care, to jobs, that "stand your ground" was not created by the president. It was created by the governor of Florida. That mass incarceration didn't start in DC. It started with the governor of California.
Ah.
That the erosion of the social safety net did not happen in 94. It happened in the early 90s with the governor of Wisconsin. And Jim Crow never had a federal law. It was all states that stopped Otis Moss from being able to cast a vote. And so for me, the calling is that this was the moment. 2018 is our time because we can't wait anymore.
And do you think that there's a basic misunderstanding in our culture about midterms and what the role of state representatives and governors do that causes people to not get out?
Well, we spend a lot of money. Billions of dollars are spent telling us who the president is, what the president does. But also for communities that have been vulnerable, it's been federal law that's changed our lives. That the equal rights opportunities, the Civil Rights Amendment, if you're a person of color, if you're a woman, often salvation came from the federal government. What we forget is that they were often solving state-created problems. And that if you could engineer the problem at the state level, you can engineer the solution at the state level.
We all know this. Anybody who runs their own business, whether it's a cupcake shop or whether you're a teacher... Funeral home. We need you. Anybody knows, any kind of business you're running, that the key to getting anything done is leadership. So how has your... Everything that is... Because I always believe everything that has happened in your life prepares you for this moment right now. How has everything that's happened to you informed how you will lead this diverse state with all of the communities and all of the people?
I recently told a story of my first major loss. I applied for a scholarship, and everyone said if I was the first black woman to win for Mississippi, I would be a skew-in at the national level. I won in Mississippi. I did not win. I did not win the Rhodes Scholarship. And that was a lofty prize, but it devastated me because I started to think I wasn't smart enough, I wasn't good enough. I decided not to take advantage of certain opportunities. But the more I thought about it, the more I realized losing prepares you for success. And so standing for this office, being the first black woman to try for this job, it's not a function... I think I'm gonna win. But my point is, leadership is about being willing to take the risk, not knowing if you'll get the reward. Being able to work across the aisle, work with Republicans in the House... I appreciated what you said about being an independent. My job was leading Democrats, but sometimes it meant leading them to work with Republicans they didn't like. Because we may have different ways of getting there, but I have to believe we fundamentally want the best for everyone. And it was about, you know, as a business owner, when you've lost a business, you understand how important access to capital is. When you go to a bank and they tell you no and they can't give you a good reason, you realize it may not be something that... It may be something that you can't change. "I'm gonna be black until I die. I'm gonna be a woman until I die." And so it wasn't about changing who I am, it was about figuring out how could I leverage that experience into a solution for others. And so I think you're absolutely right. Leadership comes from taking those mistakes and those failures, but also those barriers that you overcome and turning them into solutions for other people.
Do you think that even in these divisive times... I mean, I was sharing with the audience that I was in my hotel room for just 10 minutes and TV was on, and that the vitriol coming from the ads, the attacks, the fear base trying to motivate people out of fear is so bad right now. How can you bridge that? How can you make a difference?
I spent Sunday evening at Temple Emmanuel in Dunwoody, mourning with Jewish families who were connected to the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. And as I sat there, the rabbi, who had no reason to include me, brought me up to light one of the candles of mourning and to share words. And part of getting beyond divisiveness is the willingness to acknowledge difference, but not let those differences change who we are. I am not a different person. I've been running the same campaign. Those who've been paying attention, I've been the same person since June 2017. But I've been the same person because you can't ask people to trust who you are or to follow you into hard times if they don't know who they're following. And part of getting past divisiveness is being authentically yourself. And people may not like that. And I'm fairly certain half of Georgia is not going to pick me. I just need 50% plus one of them to do so. But my job is going to be to serve all of them. And that's why I went to Forsyth County. I went to Dade County. But I've also been to pockets of Atlanta that don't believe that anybody sees them either. Because divisiveness is not always based on race, or gender, or sexual orientation. Sometimes it's based on thinking that the haves don't care about the have-nots. And the way you knit people together is by showing you actually care, by showing up. And that's the most important thing.
You know, as I was saying, that I think that there's nothing that happens in your life that doesn't prepare you for whatever moment you're experiencing at any given time. And, you know, I was wondering how, as you were talking about, you missed... You didn't get the Rhodes Scholarship. And having student loans and student debt... First of all, it's amazing we get to live in a country where you can still be paying your student loans and run for governor.
Yes.
So I would like to know... I would like to know. I think this is actually an important question. What has debt taught you?
Number one, that you don't have to walk away from your responsibilities. Debt does not mean you're a bad person. It doesn't mean that you aren't responsible. It doesn't mean you're not a good person. Part of what I've had to learn to do is to manage not only my expectations of myself, but also the limits I was putting on myself. Because there are those who told me I could not run because I had debt. There were those who told me that because I'm on a payment plan with IRS, I could not run for governor. And number one, you were kind enough to call me bold. They considered it a very bold thing to do, but part of it was, I know how to manage a budget. When you don't have enough and you gotta do a lot, you learn how to manage a budget. Number two, I know how to meet my obligations. I don't have to... I've never... No one's had to sue me to get their money back. But part of that is, part of what debt teaches you is that other people have needs, too. And part of your responsibility is that you can't put your needs in front of anyone else's. You might have to line them up side by side, and one moves a little faster, but that you don't get to sublimate someone else's desires to meet your own. And so, I mean, I've been privileged, and I consider it a privilege. I get to help my parents. I get to help my niece. I get to help my grandmother. When my siblings have called on me, or when I've had to call on them, we've been able to stand together. And all of us have gone into some debt to do it, but because we've gone in together, we are lifted up together. And I think that's what debt teaches you.
I know that you speak a lot about your relationship to faith, and I was wondering, has your faith been tested during this campaign? Have you said, "Jesus? Where are you?"
My parents are pastors, and they've had to pray for me. Sometimes I have to remind myself that you don't say certain things when you believe in God. But yeah, I mean, like, when you know who you are and you know whose you are, it is hard to have someone tell a lie about you. It is difficult to meet meanness with kindness. It is hard to remind yourself that you have to think about the whole Bible and not just the verses that make you happy in that moment. And so, you know, I do, I lean on the teachings... He is. But I also... My parents taught me that faith is more than words. It is deed. It is how you behave, and not how you behave when it's easy. It's how you behave when it's hard, when no one's watching, when you can do something to your opponent that would move you ahead, but you know it would scar your spirit. That's the moment where faith is truly tested, and I've done my level best to never fail that test.
We have a couple of questions from the audience. I don't know who's in charge of that, but hello? You are, okay?
Hi. My name's Melissa, and this question is for Stacy. I wanted to know what you... What your plans are for making sure that our schools finally have resources that they need, so that our kids can get a quality education. Our schools are so underfunded, and I'm very concerned about it.
Thank you. Melissa? Thank you. So in the state of Georgia, in 16 years, the Republicans have managed to fully fund education one time. And conveniently, it was an election year this year. But here's the thing. We have to change our expectations of our leaders. You don't have to raise taxes to raise expectations. What you do have to do is recognize that education, when the state is responsible, it's not responsible for education with a small "e." It is responsible for public education. That is our job. I talk about it from cradle to career, investing in early childhood learning, because you shouldn't go into debt taking care of a two-year-old. It's about making sure that parents can afford it, but also that their opportunity is available. And we have some counties where there is no opportunity for childcare, where parents are basically going off to shift work, leaving their child with someone that they met a couple of days ago, and they hope things are okay when they get home, but they know if they don't go, then there won't be a home to come back to. But it's also about paying our educators a living wage, a competitive wage. And I use educators because I mean our teachers, but I also mean our paraprofessionals, our school bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. And then lastly, it's making sure that we understand that a child who comes to school hungry on Monday because they last ate on Friday cannot learn with the best educator. And so we have to have a comprehensive approach to education, wraparound services, where we educate the whole child. And Marietta is actually doing an extraordinary job of that, understanding mental health services for children who are... Who have challenges early that become consequences later, that become a drug addiction because they didn't get the support they needed for mental health disorders like bipolar disorder or early onset schizophrenia. It's making sure that we fully fund our schools, so we educate the whole child, and that we make certain that everyone in our school system is treated like the humans and the people that they are, so they can be successful.
Okay. Who's in charge? Anybody? Okay, you got one?
Hello. Hi. This question is for my sister Stacy. Okay. It says, "One of the biggest things I worry about here is health care, and hospitals keep closing in small towns, and doctors and nurses are being moved out. A lot of women die here during childbirth. What can we do to fix this? I'm Sister Robin."
Thank you. So let's understand. Georgia has the highest maternal mortality rate in the nation. More women die within a year of giving childbirth in Georgia than any other state. Because we don't have access to doctors. We have 79 counties that do not have an OB-GYN. We have 64 counties without a pediatrician. We have women who give birth, and the first time they see a doctor is at the hospital. And that's assuming they can get there, because there are nine counties without a single hospital at all. Sorry, there are nine counties without doctors, not hospitals, without doctors. And so Georgia has 159 counties. We have a state-based healthcare finance system, which means that until we bring in enough money to provide coverage to everyone, they will not be served. And so if you live in a rural county, if we've lost access to a hospital, that means you could die from a stroke, because it takes you more than an hour to get to a doctor. The Republican solution has been nothing. It has been absolutely nothing. Because the problem is, you cannot solve a $1.7 billion problem with a $60 million solution. But if we expand Medicaid in the state of Georgia... If we expand Medicaid, we do three things. Number one, we provide access to health insurance for half a million Georgians, including 25,000 veterans and their spouses, who are denied access because they are considered too wealthy for regular insurance but too poor for Medicaid. It's about making sure that people, not only in rural communities, but we have working families, people who are working full-time jobs, but they work 39 hours here and 38 hours there, and they don't qualify for benefits, but they're considered too wealthy in Georgia to be covered by healthcare. We can create 56,000 jobs in Georgia. And we can do mental health care and substance abuse treatment in the state of Georgia. Right now, the number-one provider of mental health care and substance abuse in Georgia is not our hospitals, it's our prison system. In Georgia, you are more likely to be treated in prison, which means we are incarcerating you for being sick. And once you're incarcerated, you can't get a job, you can't get housing, and when you get out of jail, you're not entitled to healthcare in Georgia until we expand Medicaid. And so for us to pay doctors, to reimburse nurses, to create clinics, to save rural hospitals, to make certain that families are actually productive and healthy, instead of getting Metformin to take care of high blood sugar, instead of being on dialysis for 20 years, we have to expand Medicaid in the state of Georgia immediately.
Are you already thinking about what you will prioritize when elected? Like, what will be the first things you do?
Oh, yes, I have. Number one, Medicaid expansion is number one on my list, because Sarah Ridzamiko is here. She's running for lieutenant governor, and Sarah and I are in lock... Sarah is from Cobb County, but Sarah is a business owner who has a company that has grown from 100 employees to 3,500 employees. Every single one has healthcare. Every single one. She also has daycare. And so what she has been able to do while growing her company is something Georgia can do while growing its state. If we expand Medicaid, we stabilize rural communities. We allow rural communities to get jobs, because you know, no one's bringing a company to a place where you can't get a doctor.
Right.
But you can also stabilize the economies of our communities, and half a million Georgians suddenly won't have to worry about missing work because they have a cold, or worse, coming to work with that cold so everybody else gets sick. And then after that, I've got to work on education. We gotta get stuff done on transit. I know Cobb County, you guys have a few issues with transit. But yeah, I'm excited, because I know that the first 100 days sets the tone, but what we can do to stabilize, reorient, and then move the state forward, growing, building on a legacy... The Republicans haven't been all bad. Governor Deal and I've worked together on criminal justice reform, on transportation, on education, on kinship care, grandparents, and others raising children. We can build on that legacy, but we have to know that we can't leave anybody else behind. And Georgia's left too many people behind, and that's why we've gotta do this immediately and hard.
Okay. I'm gonna tell you some of the books you should read a little bit. You know I love books, and I was so fascinated when I heard that you'd been writing under a pseudonym. I wanna know, what does... Is that how you calm down? Is that how you relax? Is that what you... Is that your getaway space, writing?
So I'm not just saying this because you're sitting here. I wrote it down before, so people can tell you I'm telling the truth. When I was in college, I had a list... I broke up with this boy, and he was really mean to me. So I made a list of all the things I was going to do to prove to him that he made the worst mistake of his life. I did mine on Lotus 123. It was a spreadsheet. I had dates. I had accomplishments. I had a timetable. One was to be kinda like you a little bit, one day. But one was that I was gonna be a bestselling novelist. And so in law school, instead of going to all of my classes, I wrote my first romance novel. Called Rules of Engagement, and then they bought it, and then I started writing more and more. I moved into leadership sort of memoir books, nonfiction, recently. And in between, I wrote a book called... I wrote an essay on the operational distance of the unrelated business income tax exemption. I think my father's the only person outside of my law school who read it. But yes, I love writing. Writing makes me happy. My mom was a librarian before she became a pastor. So before my mom and dad became pastors, my mom was a librarian, and she would... We would sleep in the stacks, so we literally grew up around books. I love reading. I love writing. I love storytelling. And it is, it's cathartic. Plus, I get to kill a lot of people. I write romantic suspense, so I kill a lot of people first. And those who survive get to fall in love.
What are you doing to sustain yourself? Because this is grueling. What do you do? Do you have a favorite TV show?
I watch an inordinate amount of television.
You do?
I do. People don't believe it's possible. I watch a lot of TV. So right now, I'm watching The Good Place. I'm watching Blackish. I watch Guys Grocery Games on Food Channel. There is this show called Greenleaf. I love that. I watch reruns of Star Trek: Voyager, Leverage. I watch a lot of TV.
That surprises me, that you have the time.
I don't sleep a lot, so I watch a lot of TV.
Okay. So what are you going to do November 7?
Hopefully, I will be on... Hopefully, hopefully, I will... Yes. Well, I gotta wait till I get into office, then. But no, I mean, look, I'm hopefully gonna spend the morning on morning shows telling everyone how wonderful it was to win this election. And then I'm gonna finish a book. My sisters and brothers and I, we have a book club we do together, so I've gotta read the book, because I think the next meeting is in November, so I gotta get that done. And then I'm gonna watch some TV, and I'm gonna take a nap. So I have three. So The Intuitionist by Colson Whitehead, which is just beautiful, and he loves language. I really love...
I loved his Underground Railroad the most, yeah.
I love the book The Wind-Up Bird Chronicle by Harukai Morikami.
Don't know that.
He's a Japanese writer who writes really sort of fantastical stories. And then my favorite romance novel is Honest Illusions by Nora Roberts.
Wow. What's the last meal you cooked?
Last meal I cooked? I made myself risotto with peppers and sausage and crusted chicken romano, so chicken breasts with Parmesan and romano cheese.
Well, okay, then. Okay, then.
Can I do something?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
Ms. Winfrey. So you talked about why you vote and why you're here. Can you talk about the moment where you were most afraid and how that transformed how you think about the future?
Easier to answer about a TV show, but okay. The moment I was most afraid was when I had ended the Oprah show. After 25 years, I made that decision myself and was stepping into building a network. And I had every media outlet in the world saying I should've kept my day job. And I... You know, it's hard not to hear all the negative stuff and not let yourself be impacted by it. And I had a come-to-Jesus meeting with myself outside, under my oaks. And you know that thing where you literally pray, "I surrender, I surrender, I surrender all," and give it to Jesus? And I said, "Help, you know, please help me see whatever it is I'm supposed to be seeing." And I changed the paradigm of what people were telling me was a struggle and turned it into an opportunity. That's what I was able to do. So we know that everybody in this audience is gonna vote. Who was already pre-voted? I bow to you. So now, everybody in here is going to vote or has pre-voted. What can we do to support you in the next four days? What do we need to do? What can we do?
Volunteer. Volunteer hard. So you all are here because you're paying attention, but you all know someone, you all know five people, who do not believe that this election matters. And it's not because they're apathetic. I hate when people say that. It's not apathy. It's often that they don't know, because no one's ever bothered to tell them how the dots connect. So if you heard something, if you care about education, you need to tell a woman that you know, or a man that you know, that their special-needs child will get a better education under a Governor Abrams who believes in investing in special-needs education. I need every one of you to find five people every single day between now and Election Day and get them to vote. I need you to call people you don't like, call people you're mad at, call people you broke up with. I need you to... So number one, I need you to volunteer by calling. I need you to knock doors. We have to knock doors. Oprah Winfrey knocked doors today.
You should've seen me. I had my little clipboard, honey. I was knocking on some doors.
And so if you will text the words BLUEGA to... Is it eight, seven... No, nine, seven, 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 nine. So nine, three sevens, and a nine. If you will text the word BLUEGA to that number, nine, seven, seven, nine, we will tell you about all the volunteer opportunities. This is going to be a razor-close election, and we do not want a runoff. That means I need you all to get five people every single day. If you want to do 10 a day, go for that. But we have got to turn out in this election. We will win this. And if you don't believe me, believe my opponent. He said, "If every eligible voter in the state of Georgia votes, he will not win. I will win." I will win."
Thank you very much. Stacey Abrams!